You ready? I'd like to welcome everybody to our City of Boardman City Council meeting. May third, twenty twenty-two. And hereby call this meeting to order. We'll stand and do the flag salute. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call, please.
Counselor Pearson.
Yes, here.
Counselor Beagle.
Present.
Counselor Norton.
Here.
Counselor Drago is absent. Counselor Williams.
Present.
Counselor Prophet.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. We probably, you know, you got everybody on this.
On there, but not everybody.
Did everybody sign in? We had an opportunity to sign in.
Signed in there, fine.
Okay, so that's where you'll get the attendance from there. We'll go to approval of minutes, April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes from April fifth, twenty twenty-two, as we're. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion that we'd like to have over those? Having hearing done. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes, sorry. Counselor Pearson.
Yes.
Counselor Beagle.
Approved.
Counselor Norton.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Prophet.
Yes.
And Mayor Cooper.
Yes. Moving on to our, uh, when she comes back. Go to our financial report.
She just stepped out of the room and she doesn't have one yet this month. It's, you know, we haven't had a chance to balance the bank account.
Copy that. We'll just move right along to our pre-arranged presentation. And that happens to be for Rebecca Williams. You're here for a reason. Do you have any idea what that might be? It's a good thing. It has something to do with the certificate. Someone turned you in for something. And it was because you were caught doing good things. Was there a letter?
Just an email that said she would like. We'd like for us to recognize her because she had picked up weeds.
Garbage.
Garbage.
She wants garbage all the time.
Okay.
So we're gonna embarrass you just a little bit, Rebecca, so that all, everybody in the internet gets to see you all over the world. So Rebecca, since you were also in my class. This is her certificate. Someone caught you with things. And it's going to be awarded to you, Rebecca Williams. And you will always have my signature as the mayor, but you also had it in class. But good job. Congratulations. That's pretty cool. Keep doing those good things, okay? And I'm gonna give you a hug because you're also my teacher.
Mr. Cooper, may I?
Sure. There, we gotta do the shake. We'll do the shake.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Keep it up.
That was always very shocking.
I can email it to the council if it needs to be.
That would be great.
I can email it to you guys. Not a problem.
Yeah. Well, and I just would like to say that, you know, it's just to recognize people that just on their own initiative goes out and does nice things in the community. Because that's what makes a community. People all working together and making it look better and do better things. So thank you so much for.
Your grandma got on too. Did you see her up there?
Grandma done.
All right, moving right along. Congratulations. We'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Over here on the side.
Absolutely. Perfect.
So, uh, my public comment is on the east side of the Loop Road. I dealt with Mike Anderson from the engineering firm. And he said, hey, Jonathan, we're gonna shut the east side of the road down for three days. Okay, I took a picture of it. I started asking the questions. He told me to talk to City Hall or City, uh, or my attorneys. And I just said, well, can we discuss this on why it's gonna be shut down? Then I did City Hall, I did City Council, uh, my attorneys. And now I'm being told that it is not gonna be shut down, but there's gonna be a rerun. The communication on this has been absolutely horrible. And this is not just a nice completed incident. There are no procedures, no protocols being followed through this whole thing. And again, I want to say, what can we do to sit down and communicate on this? Is this road sixty feet or is it seventy-five feet? Are we gonna go by the city's protocols of seventy-five feet for the road, which I would love to do and I'd love to to work with the city to get that installed? But again, there are crickets and no one wants to communicate. Um, I, I'm very frustrated on the dialogue. And I communicated my issues with the conflicts of interest, and there's even more that I'd like to bring to, to, uh, a lot. And again, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the communication that we had over email, but I wanna go back to what you said over the email. You could care less about the west side of the, the Loop Road. Now, your actions are saying you don't care about the east side of the Loop Road. We're back at the same project of what you said when you said you could care less. Let's see some action.
That was actually on video.
Well, on video, and then you apologize saying that you didn't mean it.
Absolutely.
And then, then I said, okay, well then let's sit down and talk. And then I said, what about the, you know, is it seventy-five feet or is it sixty feet? I'm, I'm looking for a dialogue on this. I, I don't wanna be negative. I want a dialogue. I want a conversation. But there is no conversation on, uh, which is, is it a seventy-five feet or the sixty feet to get them sort of resolved? Because the city says they have to be seven, seventy-five feet. So I would really like to work with someone going forward to get this resolved so that, so that Boardman, I mean, Karen Pedersen said it in her letter. Every day she talks to attorney now. This is why she talks to an attorney, because she won't sit down and talk to the right people to get things done. I think that's really sad. I mean, she's on, and I can show you a video of her saying, well, I don't even follow procedures and protocol. I don't even listen to procedures. They're too long, they're too, uh, too much work to do that. Well, why not? That's why we're having the issues that we're having. And, and it's, it's, it's really sad. So again, I want to work forward going on following the procedures and protocols. Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Is there anybody else that has, would like to have public comment? Absolutely.
I guess is that. Yes. Kelly Doherty, six eight eight one two, Wilson Lane, Boardman, Oregon. I just have a couple comments that. Um, I know I've been working with the county and we have been taking water samples. Out in our area and in the Boardman area. And I can tell you, today, we haven't found a sample that isn't full of, uh, of nitrate by thirty-plus points. Very concerning. I think that there'll be a big discussion on it tomorrow at the county meeting. But in a work session, um, back, um, I don't know, was it maybe October, November that the city had? There was a discussion around the sewer ponds leaking and I knew that there was, uh, monitoring wells going in and I, I've watched those monitoring wells. They've been installed. And I believe the word on the street is that they were tested really, really, really super high. And that our sewer ponds in the city are leaking and causing nitrate problems. And I was like, so maybe what the course of action is gonna be to clean that up. If it's contributing to our nitrate problem. I know we tested our sense well. My grandbabies drink nitrate. I'm really concerned. They're installing a forty-five hundred dollar nitrate filter this week. And everybody on that was certainly, you know, almost in panic. We're all wondering what we've done to ourselves. What, you know, we're drinking this water and it's the quality. Just poor for nitrates. I looked at your report from last year. It looks like you guys had an average of two point four on your drinking water. And the, the recent tests are up into the five point two nine, four point seven seven in your own drinking water in your collector wells. And so I'm concerned and, uh, as a community, I think we need to address. Where this is coming from, where we're gonna do, what we're gonna do about it. It's really concerning as a, as a grandparent to think that my little baby's out there drinking those and, you know. It's terrible on infants, small children, pregnant women. Causes cancer. I can't tell you the number of cancer cases up and down my road that, you know, I live on a small road and I think there's fifteen people that I know that have cancer. I don't know the cause, but the correlation, miscarriages that we've heard about, it's, it's concerning and. I'd like to know what those test results were and if any of them has them. If they'd like to answer those questions.
I don't have those figures, but I do know that we turn a report in every month to BEQ and the maximum is ten.
Right.
And we're always way under that.
And I've got your current figure, five seven, five two nine, four seven one. But what I'm wondering about is the monitoring wells.
I don't know, and I don't know that, uh, I don't know where you would give proof that you say garlic will certainly.
Well, they stated that. They said that it was, that it was twenty-three million gallons upside down. In that, in that report, he said the water in and the water out wasn't happening. They tried to get that evaporated.
Well, type up something. Send it to us. I'll see if we can get the, here or somebody to give you an answer.
So you don't have the results of monitoring wells? City doesn't have the results?
We probably do.
What we can do, Kelly, is we can, uh, try to get something together so we can come up with an answer for you. Because I do believe we could come up with some answers for you on exactly what the monitoring is. And we can also talk about it and share, talk about those things. I don't think that would be a problem for us to be able to come up with an answer for you. I just know we couldn't do it at this time.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else have some public comment that they would like to have at this time? I don't think we have anybody from. The online, but I, I, I know I didn't mention this before, but we have some high school students that are on, online that are listening to our city council as well. I'd like to give a special shout out to those individuals who are on there. I think it starts with Marisol, those all, the end, doesn't it? Wouldn't those all be the high school kids? We've got Marisol and Fernando and, uh. Yeah, yeah, I call them that, but there are a lot of kids calling them there. I actually saw him. Caesar, Jesus. I do believe, uh, that would be, I know Jasmine is, and how about Kevin? Is he a high school kid?
I don't know. Kevin Norton? Or whatever N is.
But anyway, I'd like to give a special welcome to the high school kids who are out there. Thank you. So since we have no public comment ever finished with our public comment, we'll go to our business, and it doesn't look like we have any whole lot of action items. Did we misfigure it? It goes right to our reports.
It does. Uh, but let's go back up to the financial. They called on you.
Oh, yeah, we, we passed it when you were in the, so, and you, Mr. Beagle.
Um, yeah, I don't have a financial report for the month of April yet. We are working on finishing up our budget, so I'd just like to take this moment to remind you that we do have our budget committee meeting on May seventeenth. Uh, for both the Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Portland.
What date is that again?
May seventeen. It's a Tuesday. And I don't recall if last month I gave you another date. Um, it's still kind of a save the date, May twentieth. OCDC plans to have their open house for the migrant head start that we help with. Um, that is all the information I've been given so far. Just save the date and we'll be giving more information as we get it.
And didn't you also request us to save May twenty-fourth in case the budget committee goes up?
Yes, May twenty-fourth. Thank you. Counsel Prophet, May twenty-fourth. Um, we also have that date set aside in case we need a second budget committee meeting. Uh, we haven't needed a second one in quite some time. But because of the requirements of how many days beforehand, we need to publish it in the newspaper, and we all know newspapers don't publish on a daily basis anymore. It makes it kind of tricky, so we like to go ahead and just reserve the date for just in case.
We also are going to need to appoint another member to the budget committee. And, uh. So, uh, it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so. Since. Three of you will be at the CRES meeting. We were wondering if we could get one other counselor at least to call in on Zoom. So we'd have a forum, so we could appoint, uh, someone on to the budget committee. Do you have somebody in mind?
Uh, we do have a letter of interest. That we, we put it out there that we were needing, uh, to fill some vacancies on the budget committee, uh, for the citizen side. Um, and we only received one interest, um, and that is who I would like to present at this, uh, meeting. If you're all available Thursday, we figured, um, since like Karen said, three of you will be at the meeting if we do a Zoom meeting a little bit before that. Again, we're pointing.
Okay, I'm, I'm lost. This, this Thursday?
This Thursday, we have the CRES three meeting.
Yes, at three o'clock.
Yes, and three of you, the mayor and two counselors, will be present there. Um, and since there's already three of you gonna be present for that meeting, if the other counselors, at least one of the counselors, that we have a forum could be present on Zoom. Um, we would do it by Zoom, and that would be the only business we would have. To have a short meeting to appoint a budget committee member.
Before three twelve.
Yes. Okay, you do that.
I'm gonna be right there. I, I, I'm leaving work right, right before it's all being. Yeah, I could probably make that happen. We'll just tell the press board they're not gonna start till like you did. They can wait a couple minutes. It'll be easy enough.
Yes.
Because all it is is five minutes.
Yeah, if that's longer, we'll have on.
Yeah, I will do that. I can, I, I can try to get there a little bit earlier.
But I need, we need someone, one of the council members that are on Zoom.
Or.
Counselor Beagle.
Or Mr. Beagle.
I got a medical update.
Perhaps Leslie or Katie.
Can you confirm that this is Thursday, May fifth, at approximately three P M or just before?
Yes, yes.
I should be able to attend.
Super. Okay, we'll send you out a. Yes.
May I also request a list of all of the meetings we have coming then for the rest of May, please?
Yes, I can do that. I will be.
Thank you.
Because right now, it's the seventeenth, twentieth, and twenty-fourth are the tentatives, right? Well, seventeenth is for sure. And the twentieth is the be open, possible, uh, potential open house. And then a potential twentieth or twenty-fourth. Right now, three. Okay, all right. All right, we'll just go to our reports. Because it looks like that's the next thing on our agenda. Let's go to police report.
So, uh, you should have received your monthly report. I, I do wanna, uh, just give you a fair warning that, uh. Usually this time of the, toward the end of the month, which finalizes final entries and stuff, so for most of our citations are a little low. Uh, he's been ill, um, long COVID, so, um, he's not been in the office to, uh, complete the citation. So those numbers are probably a lot different in your next. Monster report. Uh, but I would, I would call your attention to, uh, under total incidents. Uh, if you, if you look at our officer initiated and other officer initiated activity, you can see a pretty, pretty substantial increase. Um, we felt it the last month or two, at least, at least, so, um, we're, we're feeling an impact pretty good, so. Aside from that, uh. About pressure release involving the incident, uh, involving the suspects that were taken into custody. I can't really go into too much more detail other than what, uh, who put out, uh, these individuals are currently charged and. An opportunity to present their case, so. Any questions that I can answer about the report or? Yes, Mr. Beagle. Um. The total incidents, total officer reports, and total misdemeanor felony arrests of all increase. It is smart. Do you attribute that to, obviously, the, the seasonal change? Um, and also a possibility coming out of COVID to get more, more activity out in our community? I, I would say that our growth. Returning to normal operations, everybody back to normal, and, uh, of course, you're all probably happy and effective to some sort. Thank you, sir.
I got, I got a separate comment. Mine for, uh, some guidance to deal with, uh. Individuals who want to use our streets as racetracks. On the proper way to deal with that, other than jumping out in the middle of the street with some rocks and a baseball bat and, uh, nails.
Yeah.
To these individuals who want to use our streets. Because I'm seeing it on Boardman Avenue. I'm seeing it on Columbia Avenue, and I actually know where the kids live. And I'm also seeing it on Main Street. And I, I, I've called dispatch before, and usually what happens is I have an officer sit at the end of the street waiting to see what happens. Well, they're smart enough to know. That they were able to deter that. So I'm just trying to figure out. Is there something that is a, a citizen's arrest? Is there something as a, being able to make these individuals?
So I'm an officer. If you know who the individuals are, that makes it a lot easier for us to do something. Um, so if you can identify those individuals, then the officers can come back.
Okay, can you, Mr. Mayor, can you take your phone out? You've got a camera on it? Zoom in on the license plate number. All set and done? I wish I was a little faster than that.
I was gonna say the same thing. I wish I was a little bit faster on that.
You're a bunch of nails would be just spikes, but.
I would love to have you park right at the corner of Paul Smith and Coonty.
I, I'm, it's all over. I mean, I hear the sound. They go down by the park. And they like, I mean, I, I was twenty years old at one time, and I like to hear my exhaust too, so I get it. But I usually do it at three in the morning.
Mr. Mayor. When there wasn't no little kid, I'll run in the room.
Yes.
Kind of a piggyback idea. Would it, is there an idea of like a cost efficiency of posting? You know, I know in my favorite cities, I sleep in Seattle, you have a runner at light, it's a picture. Is there anything? Well, related that, you know, like over X amount of miles, it takes a picture, and then you have that car, that license plate? That was being in that location?
We don't have that kind of equipment. We have, uh. A trailer that has a, without getting into details, uh, that monitors speed, uh, track speed.
Is the city ever, uh, interested in investigating that type of equipment? Especially with, we have, uh, I would say like a lot of roaming, you know, traffic.
Sure, if the city wants to fund it.
Okay.
It's not a cheap alternative.
Thank you.
Um, I can tell you in relation to the exhaust, um, I've had discussions with all my staff that. Uh, because we are doing these compliance, you're not the only ones, um, that, uh, it is law that you cannot modify. The factory install equipment on your vehicle. So if you do, it has to be replaced with the equipment that it was approved for. So the exhaust, those are illegal. If they might continue to do what we're doing, that probably seems, so.
It was the speed that irritated me more than. Yeah, I, I mean, the noise is a kid thing. The speed's a kid thing. But the speed is a little more dangerous than the, but. All right, I'm gonna have to talk to my sister to become a private investor here a little bit.
I thought we were one.
I know we're one of them, so I do know that, because I found the car.
Yeah, he's got hard to miss.
The whole front end.
It's missing the whole front end, and how you were saying about the license plate, sir? Um, his car doesn't have a license plate on it, matter of fact, so we win. Yeah, there is no license plate to be able to grab any license plate number, because that's what I ran out to the main street for, was to grab a license plate number. Well, I looked at the car, there's no license plate, and I'm like, what can we do now? I know what color car. It's a Honda red, um, with that front bumper, has a big ol', whatever you wanna call it, um, intake exhaust type thing on it, and.
So the, the big thing, if, if we don't see it, we have to identify or witness us to identify or be able to identify the driver. Um, in order for us to take action.
Okay.
And that is kind of touchy, so.
I have no, I have no issue with my face out there, so.
As long as you're willing to do that, and you can identify, specifically identify the driver, that helps.
Any other questions? Building Department report. We'll all see what's going on.
They're busy as can be, I have to say.
Twenty-one in Boardman, Tannenmore County. Well, that shows steady growth for Boardman.
Yes, it just is steady growth.
And the other two, they're, they're showing a decline.
Coming out to the new build outs, um, big, off, off of, um, Maine. And across the street from Baylor, maybe. Close proximity.
Oh, yeah.
And I was astonished how far that build out foundations were already. So I was excited to see that. Yes. Sorry.
Any questions about the Building Department report? Moving on, Public Works Department. Yes.
Is there going to be an opportunity for this city to consider doing electrical meters for? Reading the meters from a farmer? Have we had a discussion on this topic?
We are looking at, uh, yes, we are looking at that to some of our, our money. I think we're going to spend on that. Because it, the nice thing about it, it tells you if you have a leak, like right away. So people can, you know, I mean, it, you can read it at any time. And so, no, it, it's, uh, and we've talked to the company, uh, Ferguson and stuff, so I think that, uh. We're hoping that, uh, we can get that. And, uh, install this next year, perhaps.
And my compliments to the city crew for how wonderful landscaping it is, looking, the everything seems to be. I was admiring that in the daylight. It's, you know, in the daylight too.
Yes.
It's kind of impressed.
No, but we do, we.
They're doing a next one.
Yes. Yes.
We have an idea how much money the city spent for the month of April for the free dump? Do you have an idea?
We haven't, we haven't gotten the bill yet, but we did, we did a hundred and thirty-five vouchers. And usually that's four thousand or so.
Yeah, I, I I don't, I just think, I, I'll say it again. I think we need to do it more. More free dumps. I, I don't, I mean, I know we do four.
No, we do, we do two. We did the third one last year, July, because you asked for it. But.
We only do two, spring and fall.
Spring and fall. And.
I'd like to see it more. I mean, I, I, I understand. I see both sides.
I liked the July one. It seemed like April this year, we had snow and rain and misery on the weekends when you could do some work outside. So it would be kind of nice to have maybe nicer weather for that project. Is it possible to extend it into July? Not over time, but just do a third one in July? Sure. Is that?
I just think it's nice to be able to, to be able to do that to where people don't have to throw it somewhere else.
Well, or keep it there.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I think it's just nice. I, I would like to see maybe it be a little more stringent on who dumps there, if that is a concern, or do we even care? I mean, if you come and get a voucher, then you're good.
Well, let me check your address when you get it.
I know, but I can always give my voucher to somebody else. I mean, maybe that's just, you know, looking at the trouble that we don't need. We're just trying to get free dump there. Garbage, it's not gonna be somewhere else.
Well, and cleaning up the city is the do you know what I mean? Like we're cleaning up the city if
Correct, but it could come out somewhere else from the city. That's always a concern. But garbage is garbage. If we can get the garbage in the dump where it should be, that's the number one goal. And if somebody wants to use their voucher, at least it's for a good cause. And that was my two cents on it. All right. So moving right on, we'll go to our city manager report. And this is where I think we talked about Ed a little bit in there. It was mentioned, so Mr. Regal not met up with for that. Okay.
Well, yes, because, you know, a lot of people, like you say, he, he was a big proponent of Boardman. There's no doubt about it, you know, some year. And, and I said, he always had ideas and we all know that he had some that we really were happy about and some might, we might not have been so happy about. But that's what we loved about Ed. So yeah, we're gonna miss him a lot. I mean, everybody here at City Hall, cause when he would call, he'd always give us a little bit of a hard time. So, yeah, it's, they're not going to have a funeral service. They will have a celebration of life a little later. So Francie says, save all your stories that you have and and be sure to attend. So we, we, I think I mentioned that we met with the Teamsters Union and we're waiting for them to ratify on the Teamster side their contract. So probably we, well, they have to have it done by the end of June. If they, because their contract will be over, so I'm sure we'll get it sometime. I was hoping to have it for tonight, but they didn't have it. So the the change order on Laurel Lane so far for the contractor is gonna be seventy-three thousand, a little above that, and it's gonna be more than that. You know, because he didn't have, he, he hadn't had a fuel charge or anything on that. And we knew that because of the delay that we've had in getting to do that work, that it would be, you know, an overcharge. So I think that you know, we're, you're just gonna have to pay it and get the work done. The small city allotment, the hundred thousand that we received for that grant, when we applied, we asked for it to be put on the southeast front street going towards the hotel and stuff. But when ODOT was here the other day and we were talking to them about money and stuff, we said, you know, we could really use that money up on Laurel Lane. And both, both projects fit the same need, so they were willing to let us move that money. So Carla filled out the application and sent it in and then we'll, we'll use that money. And so that should help for the cost overrun perhaps. And then that will leave us to just do southeast front, hopefully it with our own capital. And we had a, I'm just gonna mention this because we had a lot of phone calls on it. Somehow someone abandoned a trailer on Boardman Avenue right out by the post office.
They abandoned that? That's what that was? Cause I saw a sticker on it.
Yeah.
And it looked like it had been moved at least once.
Well, I think it's.
Either that or somebody ran into it and moved it.
Well, okay, yeah.
I don't know, but now it's gone.
Yes. So, yeah, we, we.
Taxpayer expense.
Yeah.
And it wasn't cheap. The movement?
Yeah, we aren't happy about it, but you can't leave that kind of trash sitting alongside the road.
Cause we had to pay to get rid of it.
Yes. Cause nobody else.
Jeff Gardner didn't want it.
We tried.
Usually they take things for free.
I know. They see that that was.
They didn't want, they didn't want the trailer.
Was it licensed?
There, no, there was nothing on it.
It was the weirdest thing.
And no, 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 no.
No, we, we tried all, no.
I heard it was the hotel that hooked it to the side of the street. Okay.
But you can't prove that.
I know, I know, I can prove that. So what, what can we do as a city to, to get rid of stuff like that or, you know?
But free? Was that free? I mean, I mean, I'm taking it back to the dump.
So we have a process.
Sorry.
If somebody abandoned property like that, we have a process we have to follow. We have to tag it, have to try to make notification to the owners. And it goes through a pretty long process. They have anywhere between seven and fourteen days to have it removed. We went through that entire process, called a, a wrecking outfit. They got here and said, oh no, we're not gonna test this. And so then we had to call another wrecking up and tell them to find somebody who wanted it. Nobody would touch it. Somebody had shoot it off the trailer hitch to tow it. So it took special ways to.
They, you know, when they dropped it, they had the hits on it, didn't they?
Yes, they come back later and to keep us from moving it. Yeah. So we were saying about fifteen hundred dollars later, we got it removed.
And a little bit of antacaster.
A lot of them.
A lot.
Yeah.
A lot of antacaster.
So there is a process for that. It is illegal for people to put their abandoned property on. And yes, there are measures to take place, but trying to recoup the costs are gonna be like
More than what it probably would have.
So unfortunately, it's a bad deal, but I, I think that the big thing is we, we have so many complaints and it's like, we have, we have a process. We have to follow our ordinance and our processes in order to make it legal.
So when I saw this orange sticker and I knew somebody that, you know, in the process.
So it's gone.
I just didn't know where it went. So before we go any further, Mr. Regal, I got a question. So the, the permits on Laurel Lane, is that what Mr. Tomlin was talking about as lane closures? Is that the permits that we got or is that what the permits on the east side for the roads?
That's it. We, so Mike Lees and I attended the county meeting. The discussion had been made with the former public works director for the county, who's no longer there. The agreement on that we would have to close the road because the connection for the sewer was right in the middle of the road. And so we went through the process of getting permits to ODOT to close the freeway out ramps and to the county to receive permits to shut them down.
So do we have a date on when those are gonna possibly happen or?
We were targeting Monday, but they ran into some issues and so on. Possibly tomorrow.
No, it's not tomorrow. It's looking more like Monday now.
So it might be next Monday.
So maybe what we need to do is, is just my suggestion is maybe when we know the official date and that is it gonna be closed for twenty-four hours and then, yeah. Maybe we get that information out, maybe to, I don't know how, I mean.
So, yes. Part of the traffic is gonna be able to still utilize some of the facilities out there, depending on where they come and where they go. The, there is no intention to ever close it for twenty-four hours. It will be open at night for sure. The intention is to put a plate over, over the ditch so that traffic can flow. The reason they asked for more than one or two days is if they run into an issue. And obviously we run into several issues, cause they were gonna try to start Monday.
Yes.
And so they just run into issues trying to do this all taken care of.
So how, do you think it would be possible that we could get, I've seen in other communities, they get ODEP a, a a sign that has a reader board on it concerning the roads or is that, is there a fee to that? That they charge us or that since it's part of their, you know, connecting to their road, that they might allow us to be able to put a sign up there to, to people who drive on it, but to at least have a clue of when the road's gonna be open and closed. I mean.
So maybe that's a question that city staff could ask.
That, that is something that's been going through. Go ahead. I can do that. But it has been something that discussions have had with the engineer, cause obviously we don't wanna affect the business. But we do have to put in a sewer. I mean, it's gotta be done. So the, the only way to do this is to dig up.
Absolutely. ODOT has signs that say the road's gonna be, this exit will be closed for at least three days.
I would assume the traffic plan with ODOT hasn't been discussed. I don't know.
It, it hasn't. I, I mean, Mike Lees came. I know, I, well, I'd like to see that.
I, I would ask that this continue to be working with us. We have have been working with the contractor as much notice as possible, but when you run into an issue like this, I mean.
Right. That, that, that's all I'm asking. So when we do, if we go a couple of days, let's try to do our best to our citizens to. I'm not, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but to try to, other than driving out there, my first drive out there, oh, I can't go here.
Well, you're, you're gonna need maybe I'm gonna get off the freeway if you go out off the freeway that way. So that, cause I'm pretty sure the freeway off ramps are gonna be closed.
To the plants, temple exit? No, only part of it. Only part of it. The west side, the west.
A turn going south. A southbound turn.
Oh, right.
Off of South Lane.
Yeah.
I, I'm asking for anything all out of the nation. I, I can show you the paperwork that I have. And I, all I was told was if you have an issue, call the city hall or talk to your attorney. And it said, we are gonna close down the road for three days.
So what we're saying, Mr. Tomlin, is we're talking, working with the city to try to for the, we can get our citizens to know that.
Yeah.
Now, they obviously said this, the potential three days. It could be more, it could be less. But I think if there's a sign out there to tell people, that's kind of what we're looking for. I don't believe the city's gonna wanna keep the road closed for a week, longer than it needs to be. Is that your concern?
Well, okay, one of my employees that I, why just tell him, just play my ear and well, there's no business, just go home.
Well, if we don't have the answer, we probably can't tell you the answer as an employee, for your employees. I know that's not the answer you wanna hear, but it sounds like the city's being told by their contractor, they can't do this until this. So once they're told what they can do, I would imagine you're gonna get a phone call from the city hall. I would imagine that common sense is they'll say, hey, Mr. Tomlin, this is what's gonna happen. And I bet you're like the one of the first ones. And I would imagine the ones on the other side are gonna get a phone call. If their business is gonna be affected. To me, that's common sense. I would hope so.
I, I don't see that common sense happening. And.
Well, I'm hoping that that's the direction for our council. I think our, our will make sure that that happens.
And, and my issue is why can't we use the whole road at the same time? Okay, which I tried to ask for. Is it sixty feet or is it seventy five feet? And I still don't have an answer. How, how wide is it going to be according to the city code?
So are you done with questioning me?
I am. Thank you.
I think. I think part of the problem we're having and this is like construction kind of a problem, is that when you build things forty years ago and you didn't see much reason to mark them, that it's turning out to be a real problem underneath the freeway. And with all that traffic and concerns for people that want to drive to their businesses and stuff, we're not happy and excited about this, because in the end, it's gonna cost us money. And so everybody, including the contractor, is working as hard as they can to try to make this be over and done with in the most economical, fast way they can. I mean, you know, they just, they understand that this is not a piece of cake out there. And so like you say, we, I think Mike Lees has been great to go and talk to each of the individual business people out there and try to explain what we're doing. And like you say, we were hoping to, because here's part of the plan, is that they're gonna put the sewer pipe together along the side of the road so that they don't have to close it down.
So they've already done that. If you drive out there, you'll see if you look down, like that, right, all the way up by the land. They, they've actually put the pipe and welded it all together. So they can just make one smooth. That's not typically how they do it, but they're trying to accommodate that and keep that road closure to a minimum. So I mean, there's a lot of pipe if you go out and look.
The Devon oil is gonna be impacted too, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And anybody that wants to go with the storages, I mean, this is not this is not the best time we've ever had in Boardman, Oregon, I can tell you for sure on construction budget. Well, maybe it equals to us trying to get across the railroad with the water line a couple of years ago.
So Ralph gets to use his PR.
Yes.
You get to use all your PR skills as best you can to work with our citizens out there to be able to.
Well, and he's learning and the best part about him is it may not have was forty years ago, but it was probably twenty years ago when they were putting that stuff in. And he has a good working relationship and knowledge of where it is and hopefully how to get around it. Well, just, just because, so you know, the port's water line runs over the top of.
And waste line.
Yeah. So, I mean, and we have to go under. There's just no other place to go. So, you know.
Well, that doesn't sound like much fun.
Well, it's not.
Well, I don't know. I'm not the business ass to do it.
No, it, it, I mean, it, because you don't wanna break any of the lines or any of the things that are there.
That's the new line that just came in.
Yes. There's new waste line after itself.
Hard after.
Yeah.
Eighteen inch. It didn't work. I have a truckload of concrete on it, on this place.
You know, so, so it, it is construction. Anybody that's never been in construction.
How about anyone who's ever been modelled a house?
This is a big problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, Mr. Tomlin, I would fully expect a phone call when that road's gonna happen. I wouldn't expect anything less.
What, what about the size of the road? Is it sixty or?
Or what, what road? The road that, the, the road, Laurel Lane?
No, the Loop Road.
The east side of Loop Lane is going to be whatever our whatever ours requirements are.
The designation, what, because they're sixty, they're sixty, I think it's sixty and so, there's two designations on whether, depends on what it's called, what the designation of the road is.
Yeah, I think it's sixty. Yeah, I think it's sixty.
Well, no, we had that meeting with Riley, it was seventy-five, I'm sure that's.
You know, we're not here to discuss. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm being unlight.
I, I can't get an answer, that's what issues.
Jonathan, I think you were providing all the.
Because I was looking at the, on the designation, it looked like on, according to what I saw, there was. Depending on what the, the purpose of the road is, there's a size either sixty or seventy-five feet, so I was thinking. I was thinking, okay, well, if it's sixty, it's gonna be because of these reasons, if it's seventy-five, it's gonna be at this reason, so. That, that's where he's coming from on that aspect. And, yes.
I could just make. Short statement, I was here, and I asked that question in your society, the Boardman Transportation Plan, that exact question. And when I posed the two questions, is it this category for sixty or this category for seventy-five? Very by their say it was going to be seventy-five feet, and that's all I'll say about that.
And I don't know which one it is, to be honest, but I don't know.
Okay, well, you do that, once you do that out, we can go further, just leave this worked out, so it's very close.
Well, I don't think it would be that hard to figure out how, what the last, what, what the east side's gonna be.
And per the city standards.
Well, they're just gonna tell you what the size of it is, and then it's gonna meet the standard that they're gonna use it for. That's what they're, that, that's what, I mean, if it's sixty feet, it's gonna be for this standard. And then that would be consistent for both sides.
That's, that's the issue that I'm trying to, yes, no, I agree with you. And when he had that meeting, when you were there, who cared? And it was agreed by Derek Riley, it was seventy-five, so then it's a difference. Of course, because the road is only built at sixty foot, so there's a fifteen foot difference, and I was saying, okay.
Well, if it's not, then it's hundred and seventy-five, then, I mean, it's either gonna be sixty or sixty-five, so whatever they build it, that's gonna be the size.
Okay, but what about that extra fifteen feet, that meets, that meets that city standard? For the others. Well, I know, but per the, per the Transportation Service Protocol, or the TSP, it says it has to be seventy-five, so what happens?
It doesn't, it says it can be, there's gonna be one of the two, if I'm reading it right.
I think so.
You have the choice of whether you're gonna make it sixty.
To how we wanna build the road, and we're gonna build it to the option that we see that will work for us.
If we can put that in document, that, 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 no, we doesn't have to pay for that extra fifteen feet, Jerry. This, this thing would go so much smoother.
Okay, let's see, do I have anything else on my agenda?
Um, I don't think so, I think that, that was. I think that was it, or other than, the city manager, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, I.
I mean, we shared a lot, I mean.
I shared enough tonight, and been disrespectful, so I better go. But, no, I think that we put in your packet, the second quarter, the. Oh, no, it would be the first quarter for the chamber, in case you wanted to read what they've been doing, so that you had. You know, that update. And the fire department, you know, had their groundbreaking, we've kind of do a little bit better job bubble sizing things. You know, it's, and I know I did mention it, the, the school district has given the city a fifteen foot access easement. And so if you go either corner of Columbia and Maine. You know, and you're turning in, you're gonna go east, east. It's, you know, that, that's really deep, that.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking, no, it's right over here.
Yes, and so the school is going to allow us to. Put the sidewalk on the inside, we'll move the fence and be on the inside of that tree line. So when they build the walking path, which we're hopefully the DCA. We can get all the engineering and stuff done for the, and they'll build that, and so we're hoping there'd be a sidewalk. It will go down, the plant, the plants now are, that it will cross about the softball field. To come on the side where of the high school property, and it will be on the north side. Going down in front of the apartments and all of that property down also.
So are they looking at filling in? Or leveling it, I mean, according to the plants, you think?
Yes, Mike, Mike called me yesterday, I think it was, and said, oh, he, because he was really concerned about how that's kind of got that. Hill right there, and the power poles above it. And he said that there's a twenty-five foot easement, I think, he said, and so that it will, we will have no problem. You know, I think we, the power company may have to move the pole back, but he didn't see any problem.
Do we pay for that? Or can they do that on their own?
I don't, this isn't the bill base like it used to be. They seem to charge. Almost every day, you know, because we're gonna put lights in up by the dog park. Not where a DCA will be paying the bill, but if you go up to the dog park. Where the soccer field is, there's a light on the backside of the soccer field, and one on the front side. That, my understanding is that's the end of the power, so they, they, they'll run that back one up from that. Back light and walk the front, but we can't put any more lights there, that that's all that will take, so. Whenever the next lot of butter develops, they're gonna have to get power from some other transform, but not ours. But if now it is staying light a little longer, that's better, but people were going up and walking their dogs and running them. And parking so their headlights kind of will shine in there. And I think we're supposed to get the equipment for the dog park here. Well, it's supposed to be in April, so obviously that's past, so anyway, soon, I think, so. But if we really appreciate the, the school district being good partners, because they see how important that. And, and it's getting more dangerous all the time.
And you see, and you see people walking in that, in that ditch, yeah, I know, I'm surprised.
I know. I know, I, I wouldn't walk on the road either unless I walk.
No, I agree.
I walk in the ditch, because I can, I can get hit like almost every time I go at five in the morning to go to jail.
Yeah, no, it's really.
Because it's, it's, it's hard to see on that corner, it really is, and there's not even trees there.
Yeah, everything about it is hard, so.
I do have a question. And down by the crosswalk, are we gonna put in the flashing red?
Yeah.
Like we have up here for the kids to get, going across the street? With the flashing stop.
I think it's gonna be yellow.
Either way, if you set a crosswalk, then we are, uh, flashing.
Oh, like we, we got right outside it.
Yeah.
Are we thinking about doing that?
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
Oh, you, that, that is a requirement, so.
There's just so much traffic on there, and that speed through there is, is thirty-five, and.
On a good day.
That's the limit.
And so. Yeah, so we're gonna have to extend that crosswalk curve down, I, I, the, the line is slight, it's just not a good. So we wanna get as much space between that curve and that hill to the crosswalks, if you have an opportunity to see it, we'll place them those, or whatever they're called. And, and then we're also gonna have one crosswalk at, at the softball.
Now, it's.
Yeah, you've gotta get, yeah, so you gotta get from, so the, the road's gonna be on the south side. From Columbia through the school property up to the softball field, and we gotta cross over. And then hook into the existing sidewalk.
At Portview.
At Portview, and go all the way to Olson, so we'll have to have two crosswalks.
Oh, you're talking about. Yeah, no, I, I know, that is.
So anyway, hopefully that we can, a month goes by so quickly.
I know, school's over next month.
That's what I said, I'm gonna believe graduation's almost here. So. And I did send the Verizon thing down to the attorney. And so we'll see, but I, whenever I kind of looked at the tower, and. If, if they can figure out how to put even their west extension, their antenna on one of the legs, if it would be high enough. That I think that we could probably. I don't care, I, I can't wait to break that contract. That's been a goal of mine ever since I started, because I don't think we're getting paid nearly the amount of money. We should be getting paid for the amount of use they use and.
Well, antennas that they have up there.
Yeah.
When, when do we negotiate the contract?
Well, it's, it's one of those that rolls over every five years. And so, my time is twenty-three. Because Tom and I hassled him a lot a few years ago. And I'm sure other people hassle him a lot, so they don't care.
He was the, the marketer before, right?
Yeah.
He passed, right?
Yes, he did, yeah. So. Yeah, you know, but, so, you know, but we need to renegotiate that. And, and see if we can get more money, I mean, there's a lot of antennas up there.
For Verizon. Maybe that would be the oldest, then you renegotiate, take a look at that, see what, what's possible and not possible.
Right, right. And I think. I think that's everything I had to say. We probably did some.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's go to any council comments.
All right. One of them is a question that I came here with, and then a few are some comments I just kind of put together, so if. The first two seem scattered, it's because I did the writing in the moment. But I'd like to say, actually, Karen, I really appreciate the apology that you gave earlier, you know, the intent of. How you're speaking to someone and recognizing where that's at, I find very important, and same sentence like, I didn't come here to. And then cutting yourself off regardless of what the ending of, I appreciate that apology. But then, that being the first, and leading me to my second, I think sometimes I sit and I recognize that our council. With the order of how we run our meetings is a little lax. Because there is a moment when, you know, customer, speaking of customers, you know, citizen comments. Where people could bring what they have questions on to us to get to the agenda on a later time. And that would provide the city, if I'm understanding correctly, the time to look at their questions. And provide the answers of the next meeting as thoroughly and as flushed out as their questions could be. Now, I really truly appreciate how lax we are at times, because I do like the on-the-spot involvement of our community. And usually, I don't see any problem with how it's conveyed and how it's working in motion between us until. Questions are asked that are passionately wanted answers, or maybe the issue is very continual for somebody. And not feeling like someone is getting the communication they feel like they deserve or want to hear. No matter on what side of that conversation is, is insanely important to me. And I just recognize that when people bring questions to us, it's because we're all really passionate about the same topic, which is our city. And none of us would be here if we weren't, so. Sitting at times in our past meetings, be personally and be quiet and appreciating that communication. Has led me to also notice that when it's conflicting with each other. And when it's a moment where it should be more aligned to the order of how we conduct ourselves, I feel like, in my opinion. Giving someone the moment to actually provide that they have a question that they would like to future put on our meeting. I feel like would clean up a lot of the back and forth that might lead to people's feelings. Intensifying, is the word that I will say. And I feel like, I've been noticing within the type of meetings that the councils had to have lately. We have been trying to implement that, I feel like I've seen us needing people to sign in more. To recognize who is here for the intent of what their purpose was. And I'm not saying that our next meeting, we should black and white change how we conduct ourselves. But I would like us to consider how we're letting these meetings be conducted, and how lax they can be at times. Because I don't comfortably sit here and see anyone, whether it be an employee of the city or a citizen of our city, butt heads. And feeling like they and their questions are discredited. That would lead me to the last thing that I did come here for a question of. And I noticed that for the first time in what seems to be many years, our city didn't upload the video of our last council meeting. Which isn't a huge. At the first glance, I would say, issue. But I would probably. With my own thinking, understand that, you know, the way it could be for the council to be able to approve the previous meeting minutes. And then we could release that for the city or the, yeah, community to see. To give a question. If that is the reason, I could understand. But I assume and understand that we only approve the minutes so that moving forward. When we need to review and return to past meetings, the minutes are approved, so we know that we have looked through them. And that we agree that they represent the meeting to the fullest. I slightly do not like us waiting on uploading videos, because it. Allows a lag in any citizen that might wanna stay concurrent to what is happening. And the very close example is, I wish that a certain gentleman could have heard what I said just now. And the idea of maybe a certain gentleman having to wait thirty days to hear that. There is people in this room that consider the fact of communication being given and being received. Will we continue to wait on uploading the videos? Is my question, everything else was just the previous notations that I saw. Of the interaction of our council and the community just now. Thank you.
Anybody else? For council comments? Okay, moving on to America comments, so I actually was gonna share something, so similar to what Isaac was, was geared at, is. Part of the, is the agenda, and part of it is the massage to be able to talk about certain things. We're a community that I think there's times where. There can be dialogue, and then that dialogue has to be stopped, and then it reminds you that. That's why we can only do it in public comment. I like to tighten the talk. Back and forth, but as you can see, there's a reason why they're public comment. With that being said, I still think that there's an opportunity. To where people can come in and share their concerns, to get things on the agenda and ask the questions. That, that's, that's my thing. But at the same time, it's tough to come to a city council meeting and want answers. Right at the, at the moment, and that's the tough part. I'm a firm believer that if there's a question that's at a meeting tonight, there should be something on the agenda to help. Get that information out in the next month, and I think we try to do that, we may not be the best at it. But I think we try to do that as far as agenda things. Because technically, if it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to talk about it, so. The only reason I think I was talking about. Some city manager things is because it was brought up in the city manager report, and I felt that some of the things, there were some questions. And, you know, as we massage this and we, our project continues in our next council meeting, we'll have more information. And if we have dates that we can share and information to share, I think there's a city that is always in the benefit to help. So. That's all I had to say. Yes.
I came tonight to to ask a question, kind of a point of order or clarification. What is the delineation as far as petition uh participating at. City council meetings as far as reference to whether you live inside of the city or outside of the city limits? Is there a difference in writing of a board and a citizen?
I don't think so. Um, I think that would just be a time that you could be able to share what your thoughts were in the public comments. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense? So if you wanted to.
The the open comment.
Yeah. So like, if you had a concern, that would be a point that you would, in my opinion, that would be the time that you would share those concerns. And then if you had a question, you're probably not gonna be able to get that question answered at the public comment. Because by order, we're just supposed to listen.
Okay.
Cause we're really not prepared to answer those. So the public comment would hear some ideas for the next. Meeting to be able to, if that generated some some questions for the council or whatever, to be able to hopefully. Do that.
So does council differentiate between a city resident? As an individual versus an individual that owns a non-residential property within the city limits?
For me, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. I have a comment. A concern is a concern. If you live around Boardman, you're. In nine seven eight one eight, you're a you're a Boardman person as far as I'm concerned. You have the vested interest in our community.
I wonder, I'm sorry.
No.
I wonder if there's a. I'm not gonna get correct word. I'm wondering if there's a policy or a. I think ordinance is the right word, but if there's something in our bylaws or in our legislative doctrine that tells us. How we could address this great question. More accurately. Maybe we could be.
If you wanted to come to the city and share a concern, I'm not gonna turn away.
That's the.
Is that is that?
I'm not sure.
Is that your question?
Well. Just how much your legal right within this city council chamber is to speak as far as. What your reference of reason is for why you're addressing the city council. And and I brought it the question tonight because humbly saying, one of the few fourth generation. People of this city and town going back before we're physically at today. I have just seen many. Differences in my forty years that I was gone during my working life. And there are. There are just differences that I felt I needed to be clear about before. I made further choices of how much to be involved.
So I let me point this, so I'm thinking of this. Uh, the story came up with a concern about the nitrates. And to me, that's a valid concern for our community. She lives in the county. I I think that is a valid concern that. I even wrote it down. Okay, that's. For me to be able to talk at another time, you know, to find out, we talked about the nitrate levels, okay? Maybe we can have an answer for nitrate levels at the next meeting because I'm gonna have it written down. And I can talk as the mayor to our city managers and maybe possibly have an answer, but I'm just, so that's an example, so. Or do you live in the city or do you live outside the city limits?
I live on the other side of Coonsy Road. Across four generations, happy and just on the other side of the road.
I wonder, I wonder in the past, if someone's had a concern and they lived outside city limits and they brought a concern to the city. We we've always listened. But we may not have the capacity and we're involved to do anything about it because outside are a curve.
Is that what your question was?
My question was legal right to address the council as far as where I as an individual stand rather. Where I live from a resident standpoint or where I own land from a non-resident standpoint.
I'd still listen to you. I would. I don't have any reason not to and I don't, I'm. Not gonna speak for the others, but as the mayor, I would listen to you. What I can do or cannot do.
The the reason I ask is because my careers have been quite uh. Orchestrated and quite strict to the written regulations. And I've seen differences here and um. My curiosity is. What is this similar to what this young man said? You know? How 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 is Boardman being run? Is it being run by a set of policy and procedures? Uh, because I'm gonna stand here and say I've read everything that the web has on the city of Boardman. And on the issue of eminent domain through the state of Orient, just to be versed on things. And I'm as an individual, I'm very unhappy as a long bloodline here of. Where I have witnessed and how I have been treated. And this is the first council meeting that I have attended. I have attended one other meeting in this chamber, but it was something other than that. And uh. At sixty-seven years old, I have been very involved in things, not living in Boardman. And speaking with my family, I had thoughts when I come back. Um, but I have faced uh personal. I have been faced with dealing with a lack of personal integrity that is making that very challenging. And most people uh. Say that's not the way to talk, but I talk straight both my careers and anybody that knows me here, I I just say what's real. And I I wanted to come and just ask that one question and be quiet, but getting into it, yes, it's very emotional. Because most of, you know, my parents, grandparents. Um, Boardman means a lot to me, even though I wasn't here for my working careers.
So what you did just right now would be a perfect opportunity in the public comment. When you share those concerns and those feelings and those emotions. That is, that is what the public comment is for, in my idea. So if you have those concerns, that would be the perfect time to share those. And if you had a question, that would be the time to share those. And that's about the only part of the agenda. Uh, that's allowed for that. So if I wanted to follow the agenda, I'd have to say, I'm sorry, but I can't listen to you right now because. Before it passes that.
I agree.
But I don't think that's appropriate at this time.
I agree one hundred percent because. Back in the day, I'm over there with the Rocker Tools and the water. So I do agree with you totally.
But sometimes I don't think that's the right time. You know? Yeah, and I know this makes the meeting go along and people are probably irritated, but I'm sorry. Yes.
I think they can address the chair and he, everybody, families, you're pretty quiet, you're able to speak, but um, in Rocker Tools and the water. But what I would like to know is, so we have three minutes to speak. If we take something, who do we take our agenda items to or who would like something placed on the agenda? Otherwise, we are forced to come here. Instead of placing them on the agenda. And I know I've asked several things to be placed on the agenda and they never happen. So I'm I'm my question is, who do I, who who sets the agenda? Is that you, Mr. Karen?
That would be me.
Do you have the?
I have. So if you said you wanted something on the agenda, I I email it to our city managers and it will be on the agenda.
So you don't set the agenda?
So what?
So you don't set the agenda?
I do set the agenda. If if there's something that I wanted additional. So I have the original agenda here. And if there is something else that needed to be added on to it, they add it on. And then if I hear something that needs to be on, I have the per. I I I approve the agenda.
Do you have that?
That's how that's how it. So if there's something you wanted to be on the agenda or any other person wanting on the agenda. I would contact the city managers and say I have something that I need to talk about this part on the agenda.
I believe though that there's a time window to get it on.
Yes, there is a time. I don't know what that time would be.
I think that item has to be given. I don't know if it has to be in writing or not, but I believe it has to be given to the city. The week before the meeting, so that they have time to get it.
You're a vacation planner.
I I don't know.
I'd have to look on what the paperwork says, but I can still add that to it if I still chose. And if you wanted to add something to it, you could contact the city hall or myself and you could have that done. All right. Have you hearing everything? This meeting goes now to your. Thank you.